And we have a good lot of participants already this evening. So hello and welcome. And this is our fourth webinar in the series for Armagh Banbridge Craig Avon, the Council Food for Thought Project. And I can't believe it's like we're at the last one already. But as I just said, it is really early in the season. So if you've missed the previous ones, and you know, you're not sure about sowing seeds and stuff. But we have uploaded the first two webinar videos on to the Armagh Banbridge Craig Avon Council Food for Thought playlist on Live Here Love Here YouTube channel. So I'll ask the guys to forward a link to that again. And to everybody who's paying just so you, you know, you can revisit those whenever you want. And and actually, some of the, there's lots of other, there's fifty something videos there altogether from the first project. And which is, they've got loads of them, kind of more in-depth information. And and lots of recipes for for using your brilliant stuff. So. And anyway, this evening I am going to and talk about harvesting your produce. So it's all very well grown stuff. And and I know from experience that whenever myself and my husband started growing stuff, we were so delighted that things grew and they got bigger and they looked gorgeous that you're nearly afraid to pick them. Or use them, you know, or you're not, you're not quite sure the right way to do that to, for longevity. And so we're going to talk a wee bit about that this evening and then about, you know, how to garden in a nature-friendly way. And I know we've been touching on that with every webinar, but actually it is really important and it does make your life easier. I think, and and if, as before, if you have any questions at all, and put them in the chat box or just fire them out there and I'll try to answer as many as I can. And Helen, my colleague from Live Here Love Here, has very helpfully put up a link in the chat box to the YouTube channel. So that's brilliant. Thank you, Helen. Glad you're here. And so without further ado, I've got a wee presentation, so I am going to share that with you all. We'll run through that and then we can, we can have a chat. And and take the questions. So I Okay, I'm gonna start my wee slideshow. So yes, this evening is about, so you've grown this stuff. And then what do you do with it? You can't, you can't sit looking at it all the time and thinking, isn't that, isn't that amazing? Isn't that brilliant? And I agree that, you know, the point of it is that you can use it and eat it and enjoy it. And and discover a whole new world of flavour, hopefully. So. So this evening, we're going to, we're going to look at harvesting a range of herbs, edible flowers, root vegetables, and then talk a wee bit about how to store your herbs, you know, do you use them fresh? Do you dry them? And harvesting salad leaves as well. And so in terms of harvesting herbs, a lot of herbs do have different usable parts. So maybe it's the leaves, maybe it's the flowers, maybe it's the roots and the seeds, maybe it's all of those. And and usually it is best to harvest before they flower. Because in many cases, herbs become more bitter after they flower. I think that's probably more pertinent for the soft herbs. But you know, there's hardy herbs and then soft herbs and hardy herbs would be things like rosemary, thyme, sage. You know, that are there as permanent plants and they've kind of stopped growing in the wintertime, but they get going again in the spring. And and then soft herbs are like your parsley and coriander and chervil, that kind of thing. Maybe also herb fennel, I'd put that in there. So. So generally, hardy herbs, we cut little and often and and kind of take a light bit off that. And soft herbs, like coriander, parsley, mint and chervil, can be cut closer to soil level to keep them productive. And you don't need any special material for that. Sharp scissors are good. And so, I mean, you can depend on the herb, obviously you can go out and just, you know, with your fingernails or or just nip a wee bit off. And but for things like rosemary and thyme and or sage, the harder herbs that can get a wee bit woody, I would say please use scissors because, you know, if you start pulling at them, you start pulling up the plant and pulling up the roots and stuff. So something sharp is brilliant for that. And so chives, I think chives are a miracle herb, they're perennial plants. So that means if you plant chives once, I guarantee you'll never need to grow chives again. And actually, they're a brilliant substitute for for scallions or spring onions. So anything that you would use scallions in, you can kind of substitute for chives. And and the plants, they thrive and grow in any condition really. And you, as Karen had talked us before, you can, you can dig up the clumps and divide them. And you can end up with a lot more chive plants to give to your neighbours or your friends. Or indeed just to increase what you have going on in your whole plot. So when you come to harvesting chives, and just gather them in bunch or a handful. And actually, you don't have to cut the whole plant. You know, you can start at one side and and just take whatever you need from there. So if, and cut those really close to the ground, actually about half an inch above the soil. Because, you know, if you just, if you just take a wee bit off the top, then the stuff that goes back is going to be a wee bit, you know, there's going to be a wee dead bit or a wee yellow bit. And actually, you know, it might seem wrong, but cutting the whole plant down means you get really fresh growth. And chives will keep doing that for you, actually, as long as the growing season is. And parsley, two types of parsley, that one in the photograph is curly parsley, there's also flat-leafed parsley. Both have have great flavour, I think parsley, flat leaf kind of wins a little bit for me. But with parsley, so you're wanting to, again, you can use scissors or you can nip off sort of individual stems. And but you're wanting to take pretty close to the base of the plant. And leaving it about an inch or two to ensure regrowth there. So basically, you'll see in in the middle of the plant, you're going to see some like small leaves. And that's where the fresh growth is going to come from. So you want to leave that. And and yeah, cut from, as it shows in the photograph, they're cut, you know, cut not too far up and take the, or take the bigger leaves out of the middle. And your parsley will go, parsley goes for about a year and a half, so it's a biennial. So the first year, it'll be really happy, really productive. And then the second year, it will probably put up a long stem and try to flower on you. Now, you can postpone that by putting, by cutting off that stem for a wee while, but actually, you probably need to grow fresh parsley and it grows really well from seed. Every second year, I would say. So as mentioned already about rosemary, you choose quite long sprigs or branches, which means that they're growing strongly. But you only really want to cut the tip off. I've worked with lots of chefs and stuff and I think, I mean, dear love them, that because they buy rosemary in and big long stems, you know, half foot long that are growing, wherever they're growing, and they think that's how you have to harvest. But actually, if you do that, unless you have sort of a rosemary bush that's about five foot tall, you, you're taking a lot of energy out of the plant and it's going to take a long time to recover. So if you just, you take the soft sprigs from the top and actually they're really flavoursome and really tasty. And you're going to get more bang for your buck because the plant hardly notices. And then you can kind of take that amount every week or two weeks. And you'll still be left with a lovely plant that's lovely and green and healthy as well. So time, similar to rosemary, choose long stems that are growing well. Avoid the very woody bits, which is usually in the middle. And and just give it a light haircut. As you can see in the photograph, that's actually, that's my time and my hands. But that's broadleaf time, which I I like because it's actually easier to get. You get more leaves because they're broader leaves, it's easier to get the leaves off the stems. But again, it's perennial, it's, you know, if you, if you don't and cut the life out of it, it'll keep going for many, many, many years for you. And then coriander, it's, coriander is the herb that it's a love it or hate it. I love it personally. And actually, if you hate it, it's not, that's a genetic thing, it's nothing to do with. You know, it's not so much to do with your palate, it's people are actually genetically disposed not to like coriander and it tastes very soapy and stuff to them. So. But anyway, coriander, the coriander is kind of a tricky herb to grow. It's not tricky, but it will try to bolt on you very quickly. And by bolt, I just mean it's going to try and flower quite quickly, especially if it, you know, there's a lot of warm weather and stuff. So with coriander, I would sow, if you love coriander, I would sow some seeds every few weeks really. And because you're probably going to get one or two cuts and then it's going to get a bit straggly, it's going to try to flower. And actually, you're not going to get that much leaf from it. So so wait till it gets up to about six inches tall. And cut the leaves as needed in bunches, about two inches like parsley from the base of the plant. If you can see young fresh leaves at the heart of the plant, leave those for the new growth. And yeah, that's, as it says in the slide, they're little and often for continuous supply is what you want. So storing herbs, so short term, you can, you know, if you cut herbs fresh from your own pots or whatever, you can put them in a glass or a jar of water and they'll grow like, I'll show you at the end, actually, because I'll have to unshare the screen, but I just went out there and cut some mint and stuff myself. So you can store them like that, unlike flowers, they'll they'll be quite happy there for, you know, seven to ten days or so. If if we're going to, if we're going to use them or, you know, or like my husband's a chef, so he's going to take them somewhere else or into a restaurant or whatever. And we wash them in cold water and then like spin them in a salad spinner. And store them in the fridge wrapped in a damp paper towel or a tight container or a clean plastic bag. And I know we're all trying not to use pointless plastic and stuff, but but some things, and I think, you know, herbs and salad leaves are if you're transporting them somewhere, a clean plastic bag is this good thing to use. And of course, you can use it many times. So drying herbs, I, again, I would, I would dry hardy herbs. And I wouldn't really, I don't, I wouldn't normally, stuff like fresh herbs like coriander, maybe dill and fennel apart from the seeds and parsley. I wouldn't bother drying because you don't, I think the whole point of them is you get that amazing freshness. But certainly the hardy herbs and woody herbs like rosemary and thyme, and sage, things like that, certainly you can, you know, you can hang those upside down from your kitchen or somewhere airy or in the garage and let those dry out and then store them in a tight containers. And freezing herbs is good. So the soft herbs, like the coriander and, you know, eating things like basil or and the parsley, you can, you can tear them up or chop them up. And you can put, place them in ice cube trays. So you can, and then fill that up with water or vegetable oil. And then you can pop out whatever you need when you're, you're cooking your bolognese or risotto or something. So, yeah, so that's rather than drying, that's a good idea for those, I think. And then edible flowers, I'm just going to touch on this really. I think, you know, edible flowers, I think, are really pretty. I suppose if you're stuck for room, you'd rather be growing your salad leaves and the baked fruit and the herbs and all those kinds of things. But I think there's always room for, for like a wee borage plant or or something. And and also a lot of the flowers that would come in your herbs are edible as well. So if you're going to, and they look so pretty and they look so gorgeous. A lot of them don't, you know, they don't have a massive flavour, like borage is, tastes quite mildly cucumbery. Chive flowers, and you can see that, that photograph, the bottom right or second from, second left from the right, and that purple flower is made up of loads and loads of wee bell-shaped, wee tiny bell-shaped purple flowers that taste amazingly of of onion. So we would, we loved to put those through salads and things. So if you're using edible flowers, pick the flowers in the coolest part of the day, either early morning or late in the afternoon. Ensure the flower is fully opened and good condition. So if you, if the dreaded slugs have been having a wee nibble on your whips, excuse me, have been having a wee nibble on your, on the petals, just take those off and discard them, put them in your compost, because you, you know, you want to use the nicest one. And usually most edible flowers are very prolific as well. And all you do is pinch the flowers off to harvest. And most herb flowers are also edible. So you can see at the bottom, I've got some violas, borage, chai floor and pot marigolds, which is also called calendula. And individual petals of those are the stunning sort of yellow or orange colour. And you can use them as a substitute for saffron and rice dishes and stuff. Or again, three salads, they just look gorgeous and so vibrant. And then salad leaves, I think, homegrown, I think if you taste homegrown salad leaves, it's really hard to go back to bought stuff, you know, well, you do, I mean, we would do that sort of in the wintertime too. But the stuff you go at home has just got an amazing flavour. So depending on the type of salad leaves that you grow, I mean, again, I'm a great believer in making things easier for myself. So I would tend to grow cut and come again radies. And you can buy them as that. So it means, you know, you take a cut. And again, leave the heart of the plant, you can see from the photographs there. And and those will come again. And top left, that's, it's not a brilliant photograph, but that's Wild Rocket. And again, I sow Wild Rocket rather than Salad Rocket because it's perennial. And it's not, it doesn't get out of control and try and bolt on you and then it's finished. You know, it's, it's there, you can cut it five, six, seven, loads of times over the season. It'll die back in the wintertime and come again in the spring. And again, just wash them in cold water and store them like your, your fresh herbs. And you'll be amazed, I know, sometimes you go to the supermarket, you buy a bag of leaves or even spinach, whatever it is. And, you know, in two days, it's kind of, it's gone slimy or it's a cape or. But actually, the keeping qualities of anything you grow yourself and you're just taking it from right the back door really into your kitchen is, is fantastic. I know we're probably a little bit premature with, I mean, people probably just have sidelines now and stuff. But, you know, it's, I think it gives, you know, when you know what you're looking for, it gives you a way, a way incentive to keep going and keep sowing more your seeds. And so spinach and other leafy greens like kale. So again, harvesting spinach, you can see a few wee holes and bits in that one. But again, that's my own, for my own garden. Just pick the biggest leaves off the plant as you need them and leave, again, leave like two thirds of the plant to grow on. And they'll keep going for you for a very long time. Kale is one of our favourite things to grow here, different types, maybe cavolomero or red Russian kale. And kale is a wonder plant, like it'll go the most for a year for you. So it takes a wee, a wee while to mature, but you can just start picking off the biggest leaves and it just keeps going and going and going. And so they're really worth growing there. And then pea shoots. So yes, pea shoots, as you can see in the photograph, just really, you're wanting to cut off the fresh, sort of, that fresh tasty, very tender growth at the top. And pea shoots are, you can use, I know I've said they're top tip, but actually, if you go to the corner shop and you get, you know, you get your box of marafat peas or, and those are absolutely fine and brilliant for growing pea shoots. So that's, you know, you don't need to go out and buy special pea seeds, you know, or pecan's peas. Just the type of pea that you would put into your soup. So I, you know, they're like, I don't know, sixty-five p a packet or something. But that would, that'll do you for a long time with pea shoots. And very good if you fill a full acid and, and iron and antioxidants and all sorts of things. So and brilliant for kids because they're so quick. Kids are, I think, are a bit like chefs and husbands, no patience at all. So pea shoots are are a brilliant thing to grow with them. Okay, root vegetables. So yes, the back of your packet will tell you how many weeks, et cetera, it would take to maturity. But like, we all know that it depends where you live, it depends the time of year, what the weather's like and all the rest of it. So really, you need to look and have a wee feel, have a rummage. So if you're doing, you know, like baked fruits, turnips or carrots or whatever. And you'll see like top leaves and and stuff like that. But it's fine just to scrape a wee bit of the soil off from around the top of the vegetable. And you know what? It's so exciting to see like the red of a baked fruit or the orange of a carrot or whatever. And they don't need to be perfect sizes and shapes. And they don't need to be huge, you know. Like baby, baby vegetables taste amazing as well. So yeah, have a wee rummage. And if you, if your soil is a wee bit heavy, you know, it's a wee bit of clay in it and stuff. You can get a wee, a wee hand fork in there very gently to one side and loosen those up. And pull them out. And I think the first carrot or whatever anybody pulls out is always, it's amazing. It's like the first potatoes you grow, you never forget those either. Yeah, so here we go, carrots, usually visible, you'll see the orange. And actually, the wee orange top is sometimes a bit green, nothing wrong with that at all, that's absolutely fine. But yeah, so loosen those up and pull them out. And I would say, I'd say most people who grow carrots for the first time, definitely want to give them a wee rub or run under the top and eat them out in the garden before bringing them in. Because again, there's nothing beats the flavour from homegrown carrots. Radishes, radishes, again, another lovely thing to do with children, but because they're really quick. But I'm not, you know, radishes are a wee bit peppery, so not every person is going to love the taste of radishes. And by the way, you can eat the, the small leaves, the tender leaves in salads and things. But they're, they're great, what we would call a catch crop. So say you were growing something slow growing like cabbage or kale or something. And in between those rows, you had a wee bit of space, you could sow, you could sow a wee line of radish and some varieties actually would be ready within a month. And so, and harvest those from, they're the size of like big marbles, as I would call them. And don't leave them too long because they, they do get woody, you know, and they get, they get a wee bit tough. So there's something that come up really quickly and you should joy them really quickly as well. Yeah, baked fruits and turnips. So again, you're going to see, you're going to see the kind of size of them at the top. But again, have a wee hook down and and, and ease one up. And again, not everything has to be the same size or shape. Yeah, love baked fruit and really, really good for you as well. So succession sowing, actually, all that means is little and often. And I know Karen talked about this as well and somebody asked the question about sowing the seeds. So you want to avoid lots, I mean, I suppose if you, you know, there's no household can cope with like forty-two little gem lettuce's all coming at the same time. And they're not, you know, things like that and radishes and stuff aren't going to freeze for you. So if, if you can, try and space them, remember, try and, you know, every two to three weeks. Don't need to be meticulous about the timing. But if you want successional crops, like what I would do normally is when I see, you know, the true leaves coming on the first batch, I'll maybe sow another wee batch and just try and keep that going. And as it says there, it's also like a safety guard as well in case something dreadful happens. The slugs get in and clean off one of your rows. So it's a really good habit to get into. If you can. So there's loads of questions coming up there, I see. So I have only a few more slides. So gardening with nature, nature will find a balance in your garden. And I do promise you that. So, you know, it's good to leave areas untidy and let the grass grow longer to create habitat. And the more birds and frogs and hedgehogs and ladybirds and pollinators and bees that you can attract into your garden, they will help to keep on, on top of the pests. Although Karen talked about last week, it's, you know, if, you know, if you notice something, it's great to be able to pick them off or deal with them or make your garlic spray just to help those. But and don't be afraid to mix edibles and flowers and, which helps confuse pests in terms of, you know, what they see and what they smell and all the rest of it. And if you are thinking about growing flowers or shrubs or something else ornamental or putting in a hedge, try and choose from, there are lots of varieties that are native. So they're really good for, for the birds and insects and stuff that we would have and where we live. And and obviously a good source of food for them. And and we're going to run through some of those in a minute and try to avoid using insecticides and weed killer if at all possible. And so trees, you know, they say a really good mature tree is every bit as good as a winder meadow for pollinators at certain times of the year. So at the minute, if anybody has noticed even out in your walks that the willow is out and that lovely yellow pollen is a great source of food for, for bees, bumblebees and honeybees and early pollinators. And apples, including crab apples, would look, look gorgeous as well. Hawthorn, which isn't just for hedging, actually, it makes a really nice tree as well. Lime, horse chestnut, again, the flowers of the horse chestnut are an absolute boon for, for our early pollinators. The june berry and bird cherries as well. And in terms of shrubs, mahonia is brilliant. Lavender, I'm sure anybody who's ever had lavender in a pot outside their front door would see it buzzing with all sorts of bees and insects at certain times of the year. And it smells gorgeous, of course. Then a honeysuckle, even the humble ivy. And I know everybody's always trying to get rid of ivy, but it is actually a really important food source for pollinators. And late on, sort of late autumn, and for birds as well. We've noticed that, I suppose the pigeons around here have been eating ivy berries. So that's been keeping them going and I'm sure other birds are eating those too. And then things like Tony Astor and Verbena. And obviously for me, because I'm usually always about the edibles or the fruit bushes and stuff. But black currants, red currants, blueberries, all raspberries, all of those obviously flower as well. So they're helping your pollinators and your pollinators are helping you by producing. And so they're helping your pollinators and your pollinators are helping you by producing a fruit. And then flowers, um, obviously we're just coming into the spring. And, and there are loads of lovely daftles about, about, uh, and I have loads myself. But actually, in terms of a source of food for our native pollinators, they're, they're not that great. I mean, I'm not saying don't have them, um, cause they look gorgeous and they lift your spirits looking at those lovely heads. But, um, things like crooks is are much better and snowdrops, uh, winter aconites. And, and then in the garden, you've got so, so much choice. Um, really, and there's a lister of, uh, facilia, mallow, pulmonaria, sedums, uh, baybam, cosmos, um, wallflowers, uh, comfrey, which, um, is so attractive when it flowers to pollinators, but actually a brilliant thing for you to make your, um, um, as a feed for, a bit like the nettles. Karen, um, comfrey is a brilliant thing for, you know, you can, you can plant it under your tomato plants or, you know, tear up a few leaves and under your potatoes and stuff, or make a liquid with it. Which again, is, is really smelly, but such, such a good feed. And clover, red and white clover. And, and this comes back to, um, you know, if you can cut your lawn less or, you know, leave it for longer between cuts. And, and I know that I have that at our house as well. You get red and white clover coming up, um, which looks lovely, I have to say. And, and the insects just love it. And then things like hellebores and alliums. Uh, but, and do you know what, there are, there's so much stuff. And hedge rose, um, hedge rose are brilliant thing. And it does, I don't know about everybody else, but you drive around the country and you see all these, Northern Ireland has all these beautiful neat and tidy farms and the hedges are cut to about three foot. And, and there's no, you know, sometimes there's no flowers or no blossom on them. And you just think honestly, if they could be left a wee bit longer. So if you've got, um, a hedge around where you live, um, to try to put things in like hawthorn, blackthorn, thorn, gelder rose. And willow, dog roses, crabapples, wild cherries, elders, blackberries, and spindel and ivy, all of those things have so much value for, um, for food, for nature. And if you want, I know I have kind of scudded through that a wee bit. And, oh, yeah, edible flowers obviously, um, are really good for pollinators too. So they might be great for us, but, uh, nasturtiums, borage, calendula, cornflowers, all fantastic for pollinators. As are a lot of the herb flowers. So rosemary have those, um, beautiful blue flowers, which come really early in the season, actually. And, and chive, and garlic chive flowers, which are brilliant for butterflies as well. And, but if you, if you really, if you want to delve deeper into that and you want to, um, know more, there's a brilliant resource, which is the All-Ireland Pollinator Plan. And, and it's pollinators dot I A. And then there are loads of different categories for, you know, for councils, for schools and for people, individuals and gardens and stuff. And if you click on their planting codes and planting guides, they provide really comprehensive lists, um, of, of plants. So that's, my goodness, um, a bit of a trot through that. But, um, we've got to the end of it now and there's so, there are so many questions. Uh, my goodness, uh, how long is, uh, it's okay, I'm just gonna start at the top then. Uh, from Tracy, how long does a tick rolls me to root from cuttings? And, Karen, would you want to answer that? I know you're only a guest tonight, but, you know.
Hello, hey, yeah, um, normally to get roots, it's about six, six to eight weeks. And then you'll see the roots and then obviously you've got to grow it on a little bit from then. But, um, six to eight roots in six to eight weeks and then you'll be getting the roots forming. You'll probably see them coming through the little holes at the bottom of your pots and then plant them on from there really. But I wouldn't harvest them until you get the young shoots coming, like, um, Gillie said, it's the, the very young shoots at the top that you want to be picking.
Sure, and you'd, you'd want it to be actively grown, Karen, wouldn't you, to, you know, before you start chopping on it? Uh, Joan has, has said, love coriander, put it in my recipe today for lunch. Brilliant, good woman, Joan. And she's never grown herbs, so it's all new information. Oh, that's great, brilliant. Herbs are a brilliant thing, I think, if, you know, even, uh, I was talking to somebody today about a bay tree. And, and I know bay trees can be a wee bit expensive. I mean, you can get a young one, if you wanna get a more mature one, they can be like thirty, forty quid. But, um, but they turn into such a big tree. And actually, if you, you know, to put a fresh bay leaves in, uh, soups, stews and pasta water, um, it just adds a whole depth of flavour to, to your cooking. I thi- I think bay is absolutely brilliant. And, other questions now, can I dig up some from Patricia? Can I dig up some wild garlic and grow it in the garden or in a container? Uh, it's in season at the moment, right where I live. It is indeed, Patricia, same here. Uh, and we, we picked a load at, um, the weekend. And, uh, I had some for my tea tonight and, and risotto. It's brilliant and risotto and pasta and we made a big bunch of pesto with it. And so, yes, absolutely, dig up. And, but it does spread and I think you're right, if you wanna, um, you know, either sink it in a pot into the ground or something, that's probably, unless you want it to be everywhere. And Helen has said, hadn't thought of eating borage flowers, they're lovely to look at and bees love them. Yes, they are. And actually, they're a classic for pims. Helen, can't believe you didn't know that. But they are, they're, and they, they taste like cucumber, very mild leaf cucumber. Uh, you can eat, um, they say you can eat borage leaves as well, but actually they're covering me tiny hairs. So I don't, I've never thought that they, I've never been tempted to put it that way. And what are, Patricia is asking, what are the flowers that taste of onion, or the related onions? Uh, and intolerant of onions, chives and even onion flavourings. Ah, God, that's a, that's a shame. Well, the flowers that taste of onions are, um, would be things like chives and garlic chives. And actually, if your onions both, they would produce flowers as well, which taste of onions. So, um, gosh, that's, um, awful to be intolerant of onions, I think. Uh, another question from Tricia, do dried peas need to be steeped first? Uh, no, they don't need to be steeped first. But if you steep them even for half an hour or an hour, and that's just get, you know, some cold or tepid water and put your dried peas in, and it, it helps them to absorb the water and then they're gonna germinate more quickly. And so it helps, they don't need to be steeped, um, if you give them good water after you sow them. But it, it does really help. Uh, Tricia, never thought of diet, using dried peas yet. It's, um, cheap as chips, really effective. Uh, yeah, Karen has said carrot tops and baked root leaves are great in smoothies. Yes, they are, Karen, very healthy as well. And, uh, Tracy has sent our apple tree fruit at the first year. And they put loads of chicken and you're on it, but hasn't fruited since. I'm just wondering, Tracy, if, um, if it floored. Maybe it needs a, a, another pollinator or something. And, Tricia, again, uh, birds eating the cherries, just when they ripen, any tips to stop that happening? Patricia, I think, um, well, actually, I nets are probably a good way, but it's, I, you know, we really get a kid and have a really big net to cover whole cherry tree, I think. But also, last year I got, no, I don't have cherries, cause I had the same problem as you. The birds got all the cherries, so I hauled them out after a couple of years. And so I just put, um, rooms or something in instead. But last year I got, um, I went to Woodbury Garden Centre for, obviously it was the year before for, with my grow yourself, grow it yourself group. And we had a tour of the orchard and they had these like balloons with, um, like on them, stickers. And, and I asked Brian, I says, what, what are those for? And he says, it's to, um, scares away the birds and stops them eating the, the plums and things. So, um, and I just Googled, you know, birds' balloon. And so, and I, do you know what, I think it does, uh, obviously I took them in for the winter time, but I, I think it really did work. Uh, let me see. Margaret, is it okay to use last year's comfrey tea? Yes, Margaret, I, I would say yes. What do you think about that, Karen?
Yeah, definitely. It, it'll smell stronger and it'll be stronger, won't it? So, yeah, definitely, use it up.
Yeah, I leave it on that way. And edible flowers look great in ice cubes and, and drinks. And yesterday, they look gorgeous. And, and everybody, if you're having a party or something, or, and hopefully we will all be having parties sometime soon. Uh, people think they're really, uh, really harsh and really rough. Uh, you know, if you've got ice cubes with edible flowers. Questions in the chat, has anybody got, um, anybody wanna ask anything else about anything grown related? Compost or, uh, harvesting or any problems they're having? No, you're all very shy, lot. Is, is everybody enjoying, um, like sowing their seeds and seeing the seedlings come up? And we've got a few buds on them, so that's, that's nice, yeah, thumbs up. But you know what, it is, honestly, it is, yeah, brilliant, lots of thumbs up.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yes, of course, Alex.
Um, I've tried to grow carrots, uh, on different occasions, but never been very successful. They, they end up always very small. Is it because my soil's not deep enough?
It could be, what, where, are you growing them in a raised bed or an open ground or?
Yeah, just in a raised bed, yes.
In a raised bed. And how, how, what depths would you have, Alex, in this?
Well, I've, I keep adding to it and I was going to try, try it. Uh, this year, it was interesting, you mentioned about, uh, you can, you know, pick the carrots quite early. Um, you know, uh, in the form of baby carrots.
Yes.
But, uh, just this year, I got a packet of seeds in the pack. So I was going to try it again. And then I think on a previous occasion, they mentioned about growing them in containers. So I was just wondering which one to go for, whether to put it into the raised beds or into the containers.
What do you think about that, Karen?
I, I'd try both, you do, you know, in the fact that, um, the Grow Here, Love Here sent you, there's, there's loads of seeds in them little packs. And rather than, like we said the other week, sowing them all together, try sowing a few in your pots. You know, as long as they're, they're a good deep pot, but also, um, wait a, a couple of, a couple of weeks then now and then do some outside in your, um, raised bed as well. You know, uh, it could be that the variety that you've tried in the past is just not suitable. Um, carrot seeds especially, they have to be fresh, you know, good quality seeds. The ones that you were sent out, they'd be, they'd be good ones for this year. But if you use old carrot seeds, they, they degrade very quickly.
But is the secret in the, in the depth of the pot and also in the depth of the soil?
Yes, because they, they, they're, you know, they are root vegetables, so they want some depth, really.
I think also the quality of, of the soil. So if you could improve your raised bed with, you know, and maybe it is already nice and loose with loads of compost and stuff in it. But, um, do do better, I think. And, you know, if there's a wee bit of looseness or sand or less, I mean, again, I, round here, we've pure clay. So we, we need to improve raised beds all the time. Cause, and I think all root crops kind of struggle with that a wee bit.
Hmm. Just one thing to pass on in terms of mentioning about parsley and, and keeping your, your herbs. Um, I, I froze the parsley in small freezer bags. So that, uh, cause I make some homemade soup and as I, I do also with, uh, leeks. So that's maybe something to pass on because you can take them and put them directly into your prepared soup.
So, yeah, excellent tip, that's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, fantastic. Actually, no, I had kind of forgotten, remember I said earlier, um, I just run out and grab a few things. Uh, this is a herb called, uh, sweet sisley. So it's amazing, it, um, it's, it's kind of quite aniseyday. But it actually, if you, if you put this in rhubarb and, or cook it with rhubarb, you, you need that much sugar. I don't know why, there is a wee natural sweetness to it there, it's absolutely lovely. But also, do you remember we were saying about, um, you know, sometimes it's the flowers and sometimes the, the wee flowers are absolutely gorgeous too and really sweet as well. And, and then mint, again, the mint is just coming up from, from last year. We have two beds of mint that are about fifteen years old. And the same mint, it's just, um, keeps coming every year. But, um, again, the thing about mint, if you're harvesting that, you need to cut it right down at the soil. And even if you only need this wee top bit, uh, you, for your, um, you know, for your mint tea or for your, um, mojito or whatever it is. And, but you need to cut the whole, the whole stem off. And then, you know, either pick off these individual leaves and compost the stem. But don't, if, if you just cut off the wee top bit, this stuff underneath, it doesn't grow strongly or freshly. So by cutting it right down at the ground, it's gonna come up really, really nicely for you. And I wish you could smell these, cause they're gorgeous, absolutely gorgeous. Uh, Patricia's saying mint is so good in a gin and tonic, good woman, Patricia. Uh, uh, we have, and we have a few more comments and questions. Heather is, uh, saying pelletet's carrot seed is easier to plant in a pot. And she's trying it this year for the first time, brilliant. And that's fantastic, very great to see how that goes. Uh, Margaret is saying, we're about to plant some rhubarb crowns. And will big pots be okay as we're running out of space? And yes, Margaret, big pots would be okay, but as big as you can get them. Uh, cause rhubarb needs a lot of room and it's quite a greedy town. So, you know, if, if you do them in big pots, um, you probably need to feed with fish blood in the bone or, or something like that. Or give it a good top dressing of, well, a lot of manure or something every year, just to keep them happy. And Bernie, Bernie is asking, uh, what's comfrey tea? Uh, so Bernie, comfrey tea is like, you know, Karen was talking about nettle tea, uh, last week. Um, maybe you didn't, I didn't hear, but it's, it's really a fertiliser. By, um, taking comfrey leaves and steeping them in water for, um, for a few weeks on, on this, it smells horrendous, but it makes the most nutritious and feed for your tomato plants, for all your plants, actually. And would you agree with that, Karen? Just keep me right now.
Yes, yep, perfectly, yeah. We, we put some on our, um, potatoes plants last year because, um, they were going yellow. And I, I think it's because I didn't realise somebody else had planted in the ground. So the potatoes had stripped the nutrients, but we had such great crop of potatoes. And every Friday, we gave them a, a liquid feed and the leaves stopped being yellow again. And it was the comfrey that we used.
Brilliant.
So.
Brilliant. And I think comfrey is, is, is so good as a fertiliser because it's got really deep roots. So it brings up all the nutrients from, from down below. And it's a great plant, if you, if, and you can stick it in the corner. So it brings up all the nutrients from from down below. And it's a great plant if you, and you can stick it in the corner of a garden anywhere and just let it, it looks quite pretty too. And the flowers are lovely.
You can normally hear it as well because of all the bees and insects. It's a very noisy plant.
It is actually. That's a good way to describe it. But and you can call it, you can call it loads and loads and loads of times. And so Catherine's asking, is there anything can be planted now while it's still cold or do we need to hold on eager to get started? Well, Catherine, you could be, in terms of outside, I would wait until soil warms up a wee bit. But I mean, certainly there's, you could be starting off loads of stuff inside. You know, in the windowsill or, but in terms of outside, I haven't, I haven't sown I haven't sown anything either because I've been busy. I not just when the, you know, the weather's turning cold like that, it's not, whatever, even if stuff has come up and germinated, it's just going to sit there and soak or and so, yeah, don't be don't be in a mad hurry. But you could, you could be starting kind of all whatever seeds you have now, you could be starting those inside for sure. Mary Torres is saying B and M have some large plastic pots. Seventy liter size this week for five pounds. Well, that's great. That's a really good tip. Yeah, seventy liters huge. So, yeah, something like that would be, you could definitely, your rhubarb, you could do your rhubarb in that. And actually, and things like even like blueberries or raspberry plants and stuff do do well and big pots and black currants. Tracy is saying, I love pine stretchers, colored pots or bamboo pots. And that's great. That's I take it the bamboo pots are like bad, degradable ones. Brilliant. Patricia's asking, could you plant potatoes? Well, I take it that's, is that in large pots, Patricia, or just generally? Just, yeah, and large pots or old compost bags? You could do, you can do potatoes surely. And and I, again, I haven't, I haven't got around to getting seed potatoes, but because they're quite difficult to get, aren't they? And I must, I must try this weekend. But, yeah, but I, I used to always kind of put my potatoes in at Easter weekend. So which was time enough. But again, the ground, you know, when it's cold like this, the soil gets cold. And I'm not, you know, you might even if you're down to get stuff in your week or two earlier, it's if, if the soil is really cold and things will not, will not start, they'll not take off for you anyway. So, you know, take your time. Patricia's saying, I think Woodbury still has some seed potatoes left. Thank you very much. That's where I'll be heading at the weekend, the weekend. So any more questions at all?
I was just thinking that if you're in a rush to get out planting, cover your ground, get it warmed up prior. You know, that's something you could be doing. Put some cardboard down, warm your soil up a bit. And then it's going to be all ready for you. And once you do get the seedlings in or your seeds in, happy days.
That's true. Actually, and also if there are weed seeds and, you know, if you're putting stuff outside and you've covered your ground to warm it up, it would help any weed seeds germinate and then they'll die because there'll be no light. So, yeah, so that's that's a good tip, really good tip. Thank you for that, Karen. Well, I think if that's, I think that's all the questions. And thank you very much, everybody. Heather said it's great series. Thanks so much. And she's learned a lot. That's, that's fantastic. It's really nice to hear. I know it's kind of as I said before, it's like, you know, I suppose we're trying to get so much into short space of time, but there is that really useful information booklet. If, you know, if you can go to that and download it. It's got lots of wee hints and tips. But do please follow that link and go and explore those, actually time, explore those series of webinars and tutorials and stuff that, you know, A, the ones that we had done and and also the ones from the previous Food for the Book project, because there are lots of, you know, there are really good information there too.
I'd just like to say thanks, Julie and Karen, for, for all the good advice. I'll be trying a few new things this year as a result of the discussion group. So thank you.
Oh, that's brilliant. Thank you. Thank you, Alex. And thank you, everybody, for for your lovely comments. But honestly, I think do your heart good to see people getting excited and starting to grow stuff or grow new stuff. Because it's such a lovely thing to do and to be able to feed yourself a little bit of stuff for your family or, you know, and share that with your neighbours or friends. Brilliant. So yeah, keep that, keep going. And terrific. So thanks a million. So we'll head off for a wee cup of tea. Thank you very much. Thank you. Bye, bye.